Good morning and welcome to this public meeting of the University of Pittsburgh Board of Trustees. My name is John Verbanek and it is my pleasure to serve as Chairperson of the Board. This meeting has been duly advertised as a public meeting in accordance with the Sunshine Act and is therefore open to members of the public as observers. The meeting is being streamed on the university's YouTube channel and a recording will be made available via the Board of Trustees website. A quorum is present for the transaction of business. Participation in the meeting is limited to members of the Board and to those individuals the Board invited in advance. Before diving into our meeting today, we have a few housekeeping items. First, I'll ask that the minutes of this meeting reflect that the Board of Trustees met in executive session earlier today as permitted by the Sunshine Act to consult with an attorney about active litigation. Second, each fall, the Atlantic Coast Conference requires the Board Chairperson to sign an attestation that the responsibility for the administration of the athletics program has been delegated to the Chancellor. The Chancellor has the mandate and full support of the Board to operate a program of integrity in full compliance with NCAA, conference, and all other relevant rules and regulations, and the Chancellor, in consultation with the faculty athletics representative and athletic director, determines how the institution votes shall be cast on issues of athletics policy presented to the NCAA and the conference. I would ask that the minutes of this meeting reflect that both Chancellor Gabel and I have signed that ACC attestation. Additionally, a few trustee-related updates to share. First, earlier this month, the university hosted the inaugural Thomas E. Richards Distinguished Lecture Series at the UPMC Hillman Cancer Center. I know many of you were able to attend. This new annual event honors the legacy of our dear friend and colleague Tom and celebrates innovation in cancer research and care. Yesterday, we celebrated the unveiling of the Tansky Family Commons at the newly renovated Hillman Library. Thank so many of you for making time to attend that very special event last night. The Tansky Commons will be a hub for student conversation and connection and was already buzzing with activity when we were there. The celebration gave us a chance to reflect on Bert Tansky's legacy as an alumnus and an emeritus trustee and the generosity of his wife Rita and his sister and our dear colleague, trustee emerita Eva Tansky Blum. I felt it was such a fitting honor as the Hillman and Tansky families have both had such transformational impacts on the university, the city of Pittsburgh, and beyond. And I have to share with you one observation from this yesterday. Shortly after the formal events, many members of the Tansky family made their way out onto the new patio at the Hillman Library, which, by the way, I would encourage all of you to do when you have an opportunity. It is a wonderful facility and wonderful sightlines of the university. But as they were posing for pictures with the cathedral of learning behind them, a rainbow broke out just as they were taking the picture. How fitting. It was a wonderful event and we thank them and we thank the Tanskys for their generosity. With fall come comes alumni award season. And next month, emeritus trustee David Chavern will receive the highest and most prestigious award conferred by the Pitt Alumni Association when he is named a Distinguished Alumni Fellow. Well-earned and the service of David to us has been immeasurable. Trustee emerita Susie Broadhurst and her husband Jim will receive the Bill Burr Distinguished Alumni Service Award in recognition of their service, which has had a significant impact on advancing the university's mission. And they, as the Tanskys and others, have had an immense impact on the city and the region in which they reside. Also, former special trustee Carl Ware will receive the Outstanding Alumni Achievement Award, which recognizes the exceptional accomplishments of Pitt alumni in their profession, vocation, or community, which have had a profound and lasting impact. And at Homecoming, the Pitt School of Law will present emeritus trustee Mike Fisher, the Honorable Mike Fisher, with the Honorary Alumni Award. So congratulations to our colleagues and thank you for your commitment and service to the University of Pittsburgh. How about a round of applause, please? I have two more to sneak in here and it's a pleasure to do. And the first is two recognitions. The first is kudos to our very own Val Engi, who was recently recognized for her work to help launch a unique oral history project known as Voices of History in collaboration with PA Humanities. Val was joined by five other members of the Pitt community who shared their stories for the project. And finally, I'd like to recognize our very own John Gizmande, who is celebrating his 40th year of teaching trial advocacy at the School of Law. After earning two Pitt degrees, his early success in the courtroom prompted the School of Law to make him one of the youngest adjunct professors ever. John has designed and endowed a broad curriculum of courses designed to train the courtroom lawyers of tomorrow. John, congratulations. We will move on to the business of the Board and begin with the approval of minutes. Those minutes of the July 11, 2025, public meeting of the Board of Trustees were circulated in advance of today's meeting and were included in meeting materials. May I have a motion to approve the minutes? And may I have a second? Are there any comments or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The meeting, the minutes are approved. Next, I'd like to turn our attention to what is an annual event, and that is the University of Pittsburgh Commonwealth Act requires that annually the Chancellor make a report to both the Board of Trustees no later than October 1 of each year. And the Commonwealth Act further stipulates that the Chancellor's annual report shall be transmitted to the Governor and to the members of the General Assembly of Pennsylvania. Chancellor Gabel, the floor is yours for that report.
Thank you, Chairperson Verbanek and Vice Chair Golden, members of the Board, friends and guests, students. It's great to be together for the first time in person since our July meeting when the Board approved the budget for next year. These balanced budgets reflect a commitment to ensure our financial stability but also to allow us to continue our shared focus through our strategic plan, the Plan for Pitt. I do have some news to report before we move into the annual report, beginning, of course, with the budget, knowing that as negotiations continue in Harrisburg, there is news related to the Performance-Based Funding Council, which finalized its recommendations for a funding formula for the state-related institutions, Pitt, Penn State, and Temple, and the General Assembly is currently considering that report with great appreciation for the work of the council. And we believe that the formula will help Pitt to continue to deliver a strong return on the Commonwealth's investment and help more Pennsylvania students access a world-class education. Across campus, members of the Board, as you know, following up from our first town hall on April 30, we held two additional town hall webinars over the summer with members of the senior leadership team taking in questions from the Pitt community on how things are progressing on campus and beyond. And we'll have another town hall in a few weeks. These town halls were very well attended, several thousand attendees for each one, a lot of constructive feedback, opportunity for consultation, opportunity to demystify some of the things that are happening, and just answer questions from the Pitt community, which we were very happy to respond to and will continue to do so. We've also been very active in labor relations on the staff side. Collective bargaining sessions with the staff bargaining units represented by the United Steelworkers Union were held throughout the summer on a bi-weekly basis. The parties have successfully reached tentative agreements on 12 topics. Bi-weekly sessions continue into the fall, with the most recent being held yesterday, and updates are available online at staffunionization.pitt.edu. And on the grad student front, collective bargaining sessions with our graduate students have also been held bi-weekly over the summer, with the most recent on September 12. To date, the parties have agreed to 10 provisions, with approximately 20 proposed provisions actively under negotiation and some additional proposals still anticipated. That next bargaining session is October 23, and updates are available on that front at And if there's news in the interim, we will keep all members of the Board and the community updated as the process unfolds. Across campus, Board members, we see all around us, the fall semester is in full swing at the University of Pittsburgh, and this time of year is obviously very high energy. A lot of members of the Pitt community worked over the summer to get us ready for the launch of the fall semester academically and otherwise. Welcome Week was excellent, very well done from move-in, lawn activities, convocation. It went very smoothly and even with some construction that you may have noticed around campus, we were still able to welcome and orient thousands of students with great appreciation to Vice Provost Carla Panzella and her entire team for doing such a great job. Our incoming class is the largest in Pitt history with a group selected from a record-setting nearly 65,000 applicants. We are on pace for another record-setting group of applicants for next year, with numbers of applications way up as a percentage year over year at both the undergraduate level and graduate and professional level. So we're very much looking forward to seeing this momentum continue and appreciate your support for all the work that the faculty, staff, and students do that has created this demand. A lot of appreciation goes to a lot of people, but of course, we want to highlight Vice Provost Mark Harding and the entire OFAF team for everything they're doing in this space. We have some facilities that we've seen come back online with work completed by our incredible facilities team. Big shout-out to everybody responsible for newly and revitalized opportunities in different spaces. First, we have, of course, the reimagined Hillman Library. Yesterday, many of you were present, as the Chair noted, as we dedicated the Tansky Family Commons, which is a tribute to the generosity and service to the university by emeritus trustee Eva Blum Tansky and her late brother Bert Tansky, also a trustee, dear friend, both of them to many of us here, and with their family in attendance, along with the spectacular and incredibly well-timed rainbow that the Chair described. Just two weeks ago, we celebrated the opening of the Campus Wellness and Rec Center, much anticipated, hub for campus life, which was shaped by student feedback and a lot of advocacy from student voices. It is Gold Lead certified, I believe, grounded in total well-being. It is the hub, obviously, for recreation but also for health and community connection throughout the Pittsburgh campus. And we're very excited that students are making use of it in great numbers immediately upon opening the doors. Members of the Board, I have a few shout-outs to share before we head into the details of the annual report, but I'll start with Pitt Athletics, who recently announced a major development in the area of Name, Image, and Likeness, or NIL. Our athletics department will assume the responsibilities of Alliance 412 effective September 30. Alliance 412 has existed since 2022 as an independent LLC and the official NIL collective of Pitt Athletics. It has attracted many new supporters to provide opportunities for our student athletes in support of their NIL rights and to build their own personal brands as they pursue their education, and has played a big role in attracting top talent to the university. So we're very grateful to the founders and supporters, who are wonderful friends to the athletic department and to the university as a whole. But this transition into Pitt Athletics reflects very forward-thinking, student-centered championship mindset under the direction of Director of Athletics Alan Green, and it will allow our student athletes to more easily leverage the entire ecosystem of tools we make available to drive their overall success. So it's also an opportunity to streamline the process for our partners who want to work with the department either directly or with student athletes. So it's a real win-win and we're delighted to be able to report it. We want to give a shout-out to Professor Tevis Jacobs of the Swanson School of Engineering, who started up Surface Design Solutions, won the inaugural AI Horizons Pitch Competition last week here in Pittsburgh. The prize includes $100,000 and a year of free office space at Bakery Square. A shout-out to Professor Graham Hatfield in Biological Sciences, who was elected to the Fellowship of the Royal Society, the UK's equivalent of our National Academy of Sciences, joining the ranks of Stephen Hawking, Isaac Newton, Charles Darwin, Albert Einstein, among others, including Graham Hatfield. A shout-out regarding two technologies created by Professor Paul Ohodniki in the Swanson School, the two of which were named to the 2025 List of 100 R&amp;D Awards Nationwide, which is a science and innovation competition. And as the Chair mentioned, a shout-out to trustee John Gizmande for celebrating his 40th year teaching trial advocacy at the School of Law. A shout-out to trustee Adam Walker for being commissioned a Kentucky Colonel by Kentucky Governor Andy Beshear. A shout-out to all of our HR professionals in the room and listening, including our Vice Chancellor on Human Resources Professionals Day. We appreciate them very much for all that they do in support of our work. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to pivot to the annual report. So we work on a long-term plan. The Plan for Pitt is scheduled to go through 2028, and many of the things that we do under that plan have more than a year-by-year focus, but we like to break it down year by year in order to report out both as the legislation requires and also for our own planning and accountability. So we'll focus on the 2025 outcomes, student and staff award plans, housing and campus master plans, among others. We reported last year on our 2024 initiatives, and as we reported then, those all finished on time. And our 2025 initiatives are in place to be completed before the end of the year. Over the past fiscal year, fiscal year 2025, the entire campus community has been diligently advancing the work streams necessary to make this progress achievable towards the Board-endorsed outcomes and targets that we've articulated in the plan. And because of these efforts, we obviously have a lot of work to do, but we're stronger and better as an institution, and I want to express sincere appreciation to everyone involved in this progress and in the shared commitment we have, the process of holding us accountable, and the process of making sure that we're our best selves. So with that, I want to walk into the plan, of which the trustees received a printed copy earlier today. I'll mention that it is publicly available at chancellor.pitt.edu, and as we work through it, I encourage you to follow along or take a look afterwards if you'd like to dive more deeply. So what will you see? You'll see that a Pitt education has been determined by third parties to be a great investment and that it's never been in higher demand. We annually break and set new records for the number of applications received, nearly 65,000 for the current academic year, and more set to come in next year. You'll see that we're graduating students in record numbers and how our graduation rates place Pitt in the top 12% for public universities ranked in U.S. News and World Report's National University Rankings. You'll see how our grads are workforce-ready and prepared for success. 96% have a job or go into graduate school within six months after graduation, and over 4 in 10 graduate debt-free. You'll see how Pitt students earn some of the most competitive and prestigious honors available. Fulbrights, Goldwaters, and Truman's are annual fare for us, among many others. And we continue to develop programs, like through Pitt Edge, to support Pitt students at the intersection of the Commonwealth's highest needs. With regard to scholarship, creativity, and innovation, when we look back at the year, we'll see what it means when we say that we propel in this space. We are an undisputed research powerhouse, serving our community with meaningful discoveries. We recorded $1.25 billion in research expenditures in fiscal year 2025, putting us in very rare company, ranking number 17 out of 900 institutions in the most recent Hurd rankings, Higher Education Research and Development Survey rankings. And we had a banner year in the area of innovation, producing a record number of invention disclosures, 444 to be precise, which is 50 more than the last highest record. And we are regularly ranked as one of the top 20 most innovative universities in terms of overall research startups and patents taken collectively. And our faculty are doing really well. We've seen a five-fold increase in national academy memberships as just one measure of their recognition and success. If we look at what it means to say we will be welcoming and engaged as a public university, that we're recognized as a great place to work, and how our most recent workplace survey, that's a key outcome in the Plan for Pitt, found, and I quote, nearly 90% said they understand how their job contributes to the university mission. And we're also elevating our responsibility locally, nationally, and internationally with global engagement supporting members of our community studying abroad or engaging with peers abroad. And we continue to do all of this, looking right here at home at our neighborhood commitments, with our newest in greater Hazelwood becoming fully operational. When we look at what it means to promote accountability and trust, we've been recognized as a trusted neighbor and are able to do that because we are able to generate, among other things, $6.6 billion annually for the state economy, or building the kind of trust with our alums and having increased the number of alumni donors by more than 5%. And we've elevated a culture of dialogue through the Year of Discourse and Dialogue, which was two years of discourse and dialogue and is now becoming part of our campus operations or our participation in the Citizens and Scholars' first-ever campus-wide immersion pilot. The kind of trust that is recognized quality lands us among the top 2% of global universities and resulted in us being named as a new Ivy by Forbes, one of only 10 public institutions in the country, to earn that distinction. And then lastly, we look at what it means when we say it's possible at Pitt, when we think about our possibilities and how far we can stretch, how we think about who we are, what our strengths are, where we are, and how those intersect to do uniquely important things better than anyone else, where we commit to seizing those special opportunities and taking those chances, like leading the life sciences century through activities like Pitt Bioforge, which will not only bring jobs and economic activity to the region through precision biom manufacturing, but also turn unique research discoveries and clinical expertise in this region into the cell and gene therapies that most in need patients can receive. Or using our strengths in health, medicine, and technology to transform the future through AI, through operations like GainMed in partnership with VIZI, Inc. Or how Pitt leaders and innovators like Roy Cooper and Josiah Lan Sahel are transforming assistive technologies to enable human achievement from mobility to the restoration of sight. Or just yesterday, how we announced a new GRO, Natural Gas Renewables and Oil Engineering Bachelor's Degree in the Swanson School, which is a key initiative for the university for 2026 as we seek to power a healthy future. So, members of the Board, I'd like to close with a video that highlights, like we did throughout the annual report, how we tell our story. In this instance, it's focused on the student experience at Welcome Week just a few weeks ago and how our legacy informs our future possibilities.
I am so honored and humbled to officially welcome you to the University of Pittsburgh.
Never in our 238-year history has a Pitt education been so much in demand. It's possible at Pitt is not just something we say when you walk in the door. Hail to each of you, hail to possible, and hail to Pitt.
With that, Mr. Chair, I conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor, for that most comprehensive annual report. Colleagues, are there any questions or comments for the Chancellor? Well, Chancellor, I'd simply like to observe for you, our staff, faculty, and students, all of whom have been going through a year of challenging and changing times and pressures in the area of higher ed. What we just observed was a continued focus, commitment, and achievement in the areas of the five pillars of the Plan for Pitt for 2028. You all kept your eye on the ball, you delivered wonderfully, and we're greatly appreciative. With that, we have another annual occurrence, and that is we have an update from our Pitt Alumni Association. It's been one of our longstanding traditions, and today we have Bill Pierce, President of the PAA Board of Directors with us. Bill is a two-time Pitt grad and former collegiate swimmer, whose Panther pride has run deep and shown brightly over the years. Bill has helped to launch the Student Resource Fund at the School of Public and International Affairs and joined the Board of Visitors, and he supported the Trees Hall Pool and Locker Room renovation project. Bill, thank you for joining us again and for being with us today, and we look forward to your report. So the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Chancellor, members of the Board. I'm Bill Pierce, proud alumnus and President of the Pitt Alumni Association Board. It's a pleasure to be here again and to share how our alumni community continues to grow, evolve, and support the University of Pittsburgh. I'm fortunate that I have the opportunity to work alongside Vice Chancellor for Alumni Relations Nancy Merritt and our 40 dedicated Board members. Together, we're focusing on building connections, amplifying Pitt pride, and assisting whenever possible with the university's strategic goals. This is especially important as we look to the upcoming comprehensive campaign. Let's start with a snapshot of our reach. In fiscal year 2025, the Pitt Alumni Association engaged 54,522 unique alumni. This surpasses our Plan for Pitt goal by more than 6%. The number reflects authentic valuable interactions across a global network of Panthers. So how are those alumni that we're reaching engaging with Pitt? We measure engagement using standards from CASE, the Council for Advancement and Support of Education, and track four key categories. Experiential, this includes attending large-scale events like Homecoming, regionally-focused events like weekly game watches held by volunteer-led alumni networks, or logging on for professional development webinars with the Pitt Alumni Career Network. It includes volunteer. This is a mentorship opportunities like Panther Shadows, serving on committees and participating in advocacy efforts, such as our new social media ambassadors program. Philanthropy, that's what you think. This includes gifts during Pitt Day of Giving or any other day last fiscal year. And communications, whether it was clicking a register now, button in an email, responding to a school-level survey, being interviewed for an alumni profile, or commenting on a Pitt alumni social media post. These actions are engagement. They show our alumni are interested. With each of these touchpoints, we can better understand how alumni are staying connected and how we can deepen these relationships. How are we helping cultivate student success? One of the most powerful ways alumni give back is by supporting students. This year, we've seen tremendous growth in our career platforms and mentorship programs. Pitt Commons now has nearly 23,000 users, with more than 3,000 new users this year alone. Our mentorship programs made 347 matches across eight distinct initiatives. These programs include connections for first-generation students to nursing programs to regional campuses. Ask Pitt Alumni facilitated more than 1,170 Q&As connecting students with alumni for real-world advice quickly, easily, and meaningfully. These efforts are more than numbers, they're stories of experience and guidance, stories of encouragement, and stories that build confidence that's vital to solve problems and pioneer breakthroughs. Students are finding mentors who help them navigate uncertainty, explore career paths, and feel seen and supported through Pitt Alumni Association programs. And I can just say, from our Board's perspective, there's also just a tremendous amount that might not even get reported, just the everyday interactions they have with students. It's pretty impressive. We're also focused on welcoming experiences for all Panthers here in Pittsburgh and in our worldwide alumni network. This year's Lantern Night broke records again with a remarkable 31% increase in student registration. The annual event has been held for 105 years, and it's more than Pitt's The annual event has been held for 105 years, and it's more than Pitt's oldest tradition. It's a powerful symbol of lifelong connection to Pitt, and if you've not been, I would suggest attending. It is something to see. Beyond Lannard Night, our programming continues its surge and growth. A reimagined Panther Shadow Program fostered student-alumni relationships for development sessions. In 2025, fiscal 2025, the Health Sciences Alumni Weekend saw a 42% increase in attendance and a 30% rise in volunteers. And as we do additional programming, we continue to receive more requests from alumni wishing to gather and support students in focused collaborative ways, increasing the number of alumni networks and increasing the activity of existing networks in an area of growth for us. These efforts reflect our commitment to celebrating our entire blue and gold community while ensuring that every graduate feels part of the Pitt story. And promoting our Pitt stories, we've also been sharing Pitt's impact far and wide. Evenings with Chancellor Gabel and Provost McCarthy in Philadelphia and Washington filled the room and showcased our senior leadership. I was in Washington, it was really impressive. I've never seen that kind of a turnout, and it was impressive because it was, I think there were as many younger alumni as there were people closer to my age. That's what really impressed me more than anything. They filled the room, showcased our senior leadership, built excitement for the upcoming comprehensive campaign, and shared the latest news of Pitt accomplishments with members of the community. And I always learn something new when I go to these events. I thought I knew it all just through the Alumni Association, but no, I learned something new. Looking ahead, we're planning additional activity. In November, there will be a tailgate weekend at Georgia Tech with a special Friday night event at the College Football Hall of Fame, celebrating Pitt Athletics legend Bobby Greer, who broke barriers as the first African-American to play in the Sugar Bowl 70 years ago. Again, another thing about Pitt I did not know, and I was so impressed, and I have been doing, I've shared it with all my alumni network, that that's Pitt. Pitt Academy events will echo the success seen during the previous senior leadership events, but with the members of faculty showcasing their world-changing research and breakthroughs, expanded school-based alumni relation efforts, and events that will best align resources and engagement goals. These aren't just events, they're strategic opportunities to deepen pride, build momentum, and remind alumni of the value of their Pitt network, their education, and what's possible because of and with their support. The Pitt Alumni Association is energized, engaged, and ready to help lead the way as we enter the next chapter of the university's story. Thank you for your continued assistance, and we'd love to see you at a future event. Don't forget, Homecoming is October 23 to the 26. With that, I'll take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Bill?
I just think it would be, I'm sorry.
Bill, go right ahead.
I just think it might be helpful if you would put the trustees on your email list of events.
Okay.
Because, I mean, people, especially here in Pittsburgh, would come if they knew when they were.
Okay.
So just a thought process, just a thought.
I like it. Thank you. Sunday, I think you had your hand raised.
I did. Thank you so much, Chair, and more of a comment than a question, but I first want to say it's so great to see Spia alum leading PAA. Spia alum, so that's terrific. But I also wanted to say how useful it is to see you report out or hear you report out on activities leveraging the Plan for Pitt. I think that shows how much the Plan for Pitt framework can really be so tremendously helpful for focusing on the kinds of results and metrics that we all want to see, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Almost on our board meetings, we always go over the Plan for Pitt, so it's really being built into everything we do, and people are thinking about it, so thank you.
And Rich Sidori, Rich, please.
Yeah, if I could just add, because, I mean, that really, that's a great comment, and that's also a testimony to Nancy Merritt and her staff.
Yes.
Who do a great job, you know, connecting with the university mission and then allowing alumni to connect as well.
Agreed. Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? And I'll simply end with a thank you to you, Bill, for joining and reporting to us today. Nancy's been recognized, and the amount of work and engagement that takes place through the PAA to our broad community is absolutely extraordinary. And from the board's perspective, the service to this board and the participation from you, your predecessors, and those who will follow you have enriched this board as well. So thank you all. Thank you for what you do. And we'll end with that unless there is any additional business to come before the board today. Any? Well, hearing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you all.